Hello, everyone. Hello. Thank you. Thank you for showing up tonight. Tuesday, October 31st, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. Call the meeting to order. Motion to open the meeting.
So made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Roll call. Mr. Gito.
I'm here.
Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
Mr. Carrara?
Here.
Vice Chair KV is absent today, but I am here. I ask that you stand to salute our flag if you are able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, which extends the governor's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law GLC 30A, Section 20, until March 31st, 2025, this meeting will be conducted in person and virtually via Google Meet. The meeting will be recorded by SMAC cable television and broadcast live and may be livestreamed at www.stoughtonTV.org. A recording of the meeting, transcript, or other comprehensive record of the proceeding will be posted on the town's website and/or SMAC as soon as possible after the meeting if live broadcast or livestreaming is successful. Times are approximate, and items may be taken out of order at the chair's discretion. First, before we jump into our two agenda items tonight, Mr. Carrara has a comment. It's not on the agenda, but it is relevant. It's a recent event that is exciting, and it's regarding the auction. Mr. Carrara.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last Saturday, this Saturday that just passed, we held the auction at the Amory on the 28th. For all the surplus equipment, surplus attachments, we were able to garner $114,000 for the town.
My goodness.
And there's a couple of good things that are still outstanding. There's one more item that we're working with the auctioneer to broker with a couple of interested parties, but we don't want to broker it in pieces. We want them to buy it all at once. So there's some work still going on. And I was speaking to the town manager, and I says, "There's got to be a little more news because we're not insuring everything and registering everything." And Tom said there's a savings of $60,000 more. So if you put 60 on top of the 114, that gives you even a better poke while we're still waiting to broker the other piece out. So I was praying hard that it was good weather, and it was the best day of the year. We matched the record at 81, so it was a great day. Paul Jafum was there, a lot of his men were there, all the mechanics were there, and there was no arguing, no nothing. It just went off great. Fran Brute Niedy was there to help the auctioneer through stuff and go over things, and it just went well, thank God. So I'm proud to say that we moved some stuff along and garnered some money. So that's all I have to report, ma'am.
Thank you very much. I was there for a short while, too, and that was my observation. It was so much fun and so much going on. Mr. Coulter, did you have a comment?
Very briefly, Madam Chair. Just, I want to sincerely thank Scott for his leadership on this. This process started three months ago, crawling under, stepping on top of, convincing DPW staff that using it once every two years wasn't good business for the town. And Scott really stepped up. And I would bet by the end of the process, between the savings and this last bid coming in, the total package will be somewhere around $200,000. And I thank Paul for his efforts and Scott for his leadership. It's a way of coming together on getting rid of inefficiencies that are what's really making Stoughton a star. And so, Scott, I thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Moving right along to our first agenda item, and I see Attorney Winter is online. So it is consider notice of intent to sell GL Chapter 61B, 15 West Street. With that said, Attorney Winter, do you?
Good evening, everyone. I hope everyone can hear me clearly.
Yes, we can.
Terrific. My apologies for not being able to be there in person, but I hope this works well. So 1515 West Street. As you'll recall, a few weeks ago, when I attended one of your meetings, I noted that we'd be providing a memo of an outline of the process as well as our recommendations for first steps. We provided that memo last week. You should all have it in your packet, and I'm happy to answer some questions about it if you have them. But let me provide a little bit of a summary. As you know, whenever you have a chapter land property and the owner of that property expresses in writing an intent to convert it into residential use or some other use or to sell it for such use, the town receives by statute a notice of right of first refusal. And that triggers the statutory process that we undertake and that I've outlined in that memo. The first step in that process is to evaluate the notice that we received. And so that notice has to meet very specific statutory criteria. And if it doesn't, our obligation to provide a response to the seller that there are certain deficiencies and so we cannot start our process. So these criteria are established by the statute. It's not, you know, up to us to decide on a whim whether or not we're satisfied with the letter. We only review it for statutory compliance. And so that's step one. And what you'll notice in the memo that I provided is that we believe that there are a few criteria that weren't met in that notice. And again, this is not an order-of-magnitude kind of test where you decide how important those missteps are. It's more like a smoke detector. It either goes off or it doesn't. It doesn't tell you how big the issue is. And so in this case, we noticed that there are a couple of statutory requirements that weren't met. And so my recommendation to the board is to put the property owner on notice that the notice of intent to sell, triggering our right of first refusal, has a few deficiencies. And so they need to provide us with a corrected notice of intent to sell, curing those deficiencies. One of them is fairly minor. It's, you know, some contact information that's required. Another has to do with certain notifications to the state that are a mandatory requirement, and we don't have evidence that they actually complied with that requirement. And the third one is also a bit substantive, and that's that they need to find, they need to provide us with a map that's of equivalent scale to the assessor's maps describing the meets and bounds of the property, and we didn't get that. And so that's an important one because that is what allows your departments to do their job and review the proposal and make recommendations to this board. So part of my memo is to recommend that this board issue a notice of deficiency, which we've drafted. Now, you'll note that the deadline to issue that notice of deficiency was yesterday. And so issuing it today wouldn't be very effective. And so having consulted with the chair, I asked for permission to send it yesterday so we met the deadline, knowing that we would have this meeting and the board could then either ratify that decision or instruct me to withdraw it. And either way, there's no harm and no foul in doing either of those things. But we had to meet the statutory 30-day deadline, and so we have. So that notice has gone out, and it's up to this board to decide whether or not to withdraw that or to ratify the decision to issue it. Now, the only other point I want to make on that notice is that it doesn't waive any of the town's rights whatsoever. It just stops the clock from ticking. And so the 120-day period that we have to do our diligence and review the town's option to purchase this property simply just hasn't started ticking yet. And so when and presumably if we receive a corrected compliant notice, then that clock will start ticking again. So really, this is just a pause and nothing more. And presumably, we'll receive a corrected notice in the near future, and we'll start the process again. And that process will essentially be to receive comments from your departments and recommendations as they see fit. And then the board can decide whether or not to schedule a public hearing, but consider whether or not to exercise the town's right of first refusal. And if the vote is to exercise it, then we have to send it to town meeting and find a way to, of course, match the sale price of $3.8 million. If the board votes not exercise the town's right of first refusal, you don't need a public hearing, and then that stops the process. We provide a notice that we have waived the right of first refusal. They get to record that notice with the Registry of Deeds, and that extinguishes our rights any further. And so that would be the end of the process. So those are decisions to be made sort of further down the road. But right now, the only decision before the board is whether or not the notice of deficiency should stand or we should proceed notwithstanding those identified deficiencies. So happy to answer any questions, but I'll pause there for now.
Are there any questions from the board to Attorney Winter? Mr. Gito? Yes?
Well, I'm happy to hear his report because I didn't know that he had sent the letter. I'm glad that he did that because I thought that we were just going to sit here and moan about the fact that the time had passed. So I have no questions on his comments. I have an opinion on that, but that's later.
Wonderful. How about anyone else? Yes, Mr. Coulter.
Madam Chair, the department heads who are charged with reviewing this opportunity are doing so, and they should be ready in the next several weeks to make their report to the board. A question I would have for Attorney Winter is the outstanding question of back taxes on Chapter 61B property. Assuming we do not exercise our option, I need to make sure, Brian, that you've had conversation with the assessor's department as to what the impact is on back taxes, if any. And I've read a bunch of correspondence about a number of $52,000 from previous discussions on this, and I don't know, and I don't think we have a clear direction on if we're due back taxes on this property. Perhaps, I know we have time for them to bring it to you and for you to weigh in on it, but do you have any sense right now if there's any taxes due on this property?
Yes. So it gets a little complicated, so I'll try to be succinct. But whether or not we exercise the right of first refusal, they're going to all roll back taxes on the 35 acres if and when they sell it. And so I had, as you know, office hours on Thursdays, and I spoke with Paul, and I've been in communication with your assessor as well, the rollback tax portion of it. So that's kind of in a separate category than our right of first refusal. And so that'll happen kind of mechanically on its own, irrespective of the board's decision. If they go forward with a sale, they're going to all roll back taxes. Now, the amount that you mentioned, the $52,000, concerns another piece of this property that was sold some time ago. And there's an open question that we're performing some diligence on about what transpired in that period. This was originally approximately a 40-acre parcel, and about, oh, close to five acres, I think 4.8, 4.9 acres, was sold off previously. And there's a question about whether or not those rollback taxes for that portion of it was offered to the town and paid properly. So we're looking into that separately, and that conversation and that diligence continues now. But the portion that we're talking about tonight, the 35 acres, there's no question on that part. When they consummate the sale, either to us or to the third party they have a purchase and sale agreement with, they will owe the rollback taxes approximately five years of the delta between the tax-benefited assessment and the non-tax-benefited assessment.
Thank you, Brian. That was very helpful.
Mr. McCrisky, I see. Okay. Okay. So the motion you would like?
Do you take the call, Brian?
No. No.
No.
I just have a question.
No, Mr. McDonald. The motion, I'm sorry, I was thrown off. What you ask for the board, Attorney Winter, is you want us to approve sending the notice of deficiency. Is that the motion and the wording you would like?
That's correct. Because the motion, I mean, the letter is already out. I would suggest that you ratify the already issued notice of deficiency, if that's the wish of the board.
Okay. I'm open to accept a motion at this time?
Yes.
Oh, yes, Mr. Coulter?
I don't think the gentleman heard your answer. Is this open for comment?
No, it is not open for a comment.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Motion? Yes, Mr. Gito.
I move that we ratify the letter or the motion of deficiencies, whatever. Is it a letter of deficiencies or what?
Brian?
Mr. Gito, yes, it's a letter, and it's stylized or captioned, if you will, as a notice of deficiency.
Okay. Motion to ratify the letter of the motion of deficiencies on the issue of 1550 West Street.
Second.
Second?
Question.
All in favor? Oh, question? Mr. McCrisky.
Just want to be clear that this is just to send it back to be corrected, and it's going to come back, the final document that will come back to us to be voted correctly? Is that my understanding?
That is correct, Mr. McCrisky.
Okay, thank you.
It's only a pause, and when the letter is corrected and returned to us, we'll continue our process.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Carrara?
Madam Chair, and is there a reason why Mr. McDonald from the conservation couldn't speak?
The agenda item is to, for the board to vote to ratify a notice that was previously submitted. We're going to have another opportunity, hopefully, when this comes back around, and we hope Mr. McDonald is present at that time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Question revolves around Brian's activities. I just wanted to make sure. I have a question. You got a notice going out, that's all.
So you have a question to, okay, we've?
The property, just above the notice.
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Oh, push the button for green.
Hi, thank you. Jerry McDonald, Open Space Committee. My question to Brian is very specific but very minor. The notice needed to go out yesterday? Is that my understanding?
Yes, the deadline was the 30th.
Okay. Did it go out certified mail?
Yes, it did.
It did. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Ms. Gito?
Okay. The reason for my motion is that I think it's important that we make sure that situations like this, we get all the information that we were expected to get. And, you know, when we get all of that, then we can move ahead to make a decision on what we want to do. But I think it would be irresponsible of us to not make sure that we get all of the information that we should be getting. I mean, we just wouldn't be doing our job.
I agree with you wholeheartedly because there were a list of many items that were deficient. And I would like to, as well as you and the full board, would like to have all information to make a sound and reasonable decision. You have a motion on the floor. It was seconded on the motion. I kind of was taken aback and lost track. Mr. Gito?
Yes.
Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
Mr. Carrara?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So thank you very much. That closes that first item on the agenda. The next item is to consider approval of a purchase and sale agreement regarding 30 Porter Street. And with that said, Attorney Winter?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So as board members are very likely aware, you have a town meeting warrant article concerning this property. And the warrant article is asking Town Meeting if the town wishes to fund and acquire this parcel. The intent of the parcel is for public parking, and we have been, we through myself and through Mark Tisdale predominantly, have been discussing and negotiating potential terms of acquisition with the seller and the seller's attorney for some time. However, despite the fact that Town Meeting is beginning very, very soon, we do not have the parcel under contract. And so very recently, we came to terms. It's evolved in concept over the past few months, but we have now reached agreement on a form of purchase and sale, which is a straightforward acquisition of the property. And the seller has signed that and returned it to us so that this board can consider it. It's a very standard purchase and sale agreement that you might see for any municipal acquisition of property. And so the terms are not that different than you'd see in any, you know, standard residential purchase and sale, but for one. And that's that our decisions and our funding are all contingent on the will of Town Meeting. And so you will see that there are a number of provisions in the purchase and sale agreement that are specifically crafted to make the deal contingent upon a Town Meeting approval. And if Town Meeting does not approve this acquisition, then we can withdraw from this deal. If we need more time, for example, if Town Meeting does approve it and it's subject to borrowing, and we need time to actually effectuate that borrowing, then we can extend the closing date. So those are somewhat unique provisions, but things that you would find pretty standard in a municipal purchase and sale agreement. And so there's nothing any more nuanced about it than that. So the town would be in a position, if Town Meeting approved this, to acquire 30 Porter Street, which is the parcel, I'm sure you're familiar with it, right behind Town Hall. And I will defer to others as to kind of the engineering details and sort of end-use details. But in a nutshell, the idea would be to raise the existing structure and grade the site so that it can be graded, paved, and striped for public parking. And so what I've put before the board for discussion and a vote tonight is whether or not to approve the purchase and sale agreement and enter into a contract with the seller contingent upon Town Meeting to acquire the property. So it is really that simple, and I believe that there have been some prior discussions in other contexts and forums about the town's plans for the property. So I may defer to Mr. Coulter about some of those if he wishes to chime in. But I'll stop there, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Attorney Winter. Any of the board members want to comment now or? Okay, Mr. McCrisky, and then you, Mr. Coulter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to get my support for this right up front. Madam Chair, and Scott was there with us, and Steve and yourself, when we had changed the process of a public safety building to working smarter, not hotter, and we had decided we were going to build the fire station, which was at a savings, you know, at several millions of dollars in savings from everything that that would have been. And we talked about it then, about the importance of the need for renovations and updates, more room for the police station. And when we did talk about it then, we talked about having a piece of land that was sitting on Rose Street that we didn't have to buy, and we didn't have to go out to bid, and RFPs, and put together another 17-member committee, when we could get it done by expanding the current police station onto the property that it sits next to on the Rose Street. And that is our municipal parking. There's town vehicles there. And again, I will support this. I will fight for it, you know, here and at Town Meeting floor because that is the future development of our police station. If we were to go out to bid for this, we already have the homework done. When we did the plans for the, when the town did the plans for the public safety building, all the needs of the police department was built into that study, and those needs exceeded what they have now. So we already have the data of what we need to add on to the police department, why we need these add-ons that the police department was looking for then. And we said at the time, "Let's get the fire station built and start building, and then we'll move on." Now, this piece of property is critical to that process. Critical, absolutely critical, because it allows us to build on our own land and to meet the needs of putting a few more parking of the town vehicles here and public parking when those vehicles are on the road. We have just a few vehicles that we can no longer park there, and we need to have a place for them without, you know, placing our employees out into the street. So we want to make sure that we have enough for everybody. But this piece of property is probably the most critical piece of property we've ever dealt with in the past few years, and the importance, because without it, you know, we're going to have a problem somewhere, and building, you know, the addition on that property is going to be much harder. So this could be, you know, a 15 to 20 million dollar savings on any kind of construction at the police department for a property that's only worth a half a million dollars. So it's definitely got a huge return on investment. It allows us to really control our destiny, build what's good for the police department, good for the men and women of the police department, and especially good for our residents at a significant savings for a small lot. A small lot makes a big difference. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCrisky. Oh, Mr. Carrara?
Madam Chairman, we spent a ton of money on this town hall to make it look the way it is, bring it back to life. And when I first got on the board, I had to learn a few things. And then I said to a former town manager, I says, "Jeez, we should start gobbling up the properties that are around this building." The first property that came available was JW Woods's down here. The guy bought that for $98,000. That whole big factory for 98. We could have had that. Then the house, with God rest Victor's life, we ended up with that. We should have been on the next piece of property if we had bought JW Woods's. Then Dr. McGurk's property became available. We could have got that. This whole peninsula right here would have been straightened out, and there would have been tons of room for everything. And there was a lot of balls dropped. And it's sad to say that we have to pay great money now for smaller pieces to gain what they want. Everybody was looking to move the police station, I guess, to... I guess Don, Chief McNamara is set that she can do that. When I gave the idea to add on to that building 40 feet, go two floors, have Chief McNamara design what she needs, what she's missing, I fell on deaf ears. We started to run around town chasing empty land. And, and that's why I said to Joe when he was chairman, I says, Joe, if I get elected, first thing I'm going to do is dissolve something because it's just out of control. That's an easy fix over there. You can get all your cruisers undercover if you just take the hill down. That's the problem there. Bring it to road level, go out to 40 feet or more, and you can put all the cruisers up underneath, and there'll be officers above it, and it's all over. We own the property, and it's an easy expansion. We get architects that don't have closed minds because they built something in another town, and they're trying to fit it on the end of that building. You don't have to use the same people all the time. There's some smart people out there, smarter than some smart people. So, I agree with, with Joe on this parcel, and it's just sad that we didn't get the ones in between here.
Thank you very much. Mr. Coulter.
Please, Madam Chair, thank you. By way of public disclosure, I'm a lifetime friend of the seller of this property. So, I asked Mr. Tisdale to take the lead in all negotiations in collaboration with Mr. Winter. I've also filed a public disclosure with our Clerk's Office to avoid any appearance of a conflict of interest. So, that, that notice is on file in the Clerk's Office for anyone who would like to read it. My comment is one of clarity and not advocacy. After we presented to the Finance Committee, strike that, after Mr. Tisdale presented to the Finance Committee, several members of the committee contacted me because I think they voted unanimously in opposition of this project. And several of the members contacted me the following week and asked for clarity. What wasn't clear to them in the presentation, in their comments are very helpful, because they'll be very clear in the presentation before Town Meeting, this particular site on Porter Street is not attached to the police department. That was, they were either led to believe or misunderstood that it was attached to the police department, and that that piece of land would allow them to put an addition on. That's not the case. This piece of land will provide Town Hall and public parking to replace the portion of the land next to the police department that will be eaten up by an addition. So, the reason they voted for, against it, by their admission, was that they couldn't see how this lot of land on Porter Street was connected to the police department. You can't put an addition when it's on the other side of the street. It's to provide us with the additional parking needed if the public parking lot adjacent to the police station is used for an addition to the police department. So, I just wanted to clarify that point. It's a key point that caused some members to vote against it by their admission, and will be clarified at Town Meeting by Mr. Tisdale's presentation. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Coulter, and to you, our Attorney Winter, since Mr. Tisdale is not here. Just for clarification, additional clarification, this is public parking for downtown, not overflow for employee at Town Hall parking. And it's going to be first come, first served. Now, is what I just said correct?
I believe, I'll leave that to Brian Winter, but I believe that's 100% correct.
That is 100% my understanding, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. As we purchase land or parcels, I like to be clear on the use before, you know, I completely buy into the process. And I know we went through our whole discussion about this early on, but I just wanted to clarify so I had my ducks in a row.
I agree with you. I agree. So, let me be even clearer. It is public parking. But what we've found as a result of Mr. McCrisky's leadership on downtown parking violations, we've tagged more than 50 cars in the past week that have been parking illegally. One of them was a car in the town parking lot for employees where they were having their car conditioned at 1:00 in the afternoon parked in the employees' parking lot. So, the answer to the question is the intent is for it to be public parking. Having said that, many of our employees have been parking over in the remote parking space next to the police department because people have been illegally parking in the town employee parking lot. So, this will clarify all that up. And so, it is intended to be public parking. It'll be used during the day by our employees, and off hours and weekends by whoever chooses to use it from the public.
Thank you for that additional clarification. Mr. Gito?
I wasn't here for any of the discussions that Mr. McCrisky or Mr. Carrara mentioned. All of that occurred before I was on the board. The, just for clarification purposes, the parking management study that was done for the town indicates that there are 65 municipal parking spaces, not public parking spaces, but for municipal employees at Rose Street. If those are going away, the 13 spaces that are going to be public spaces here won't come close to dealing with the 65. So, I would suggest that we go back and look at the planning, the parking management study that was modified in, I believe it was 2021. You can find it online, just so that we're clear. I did not see, and maybe I'm wrong, but I did not see the appraisal for the property until I got the warrant. I might be the only person that didn't see that, and maybe I, maybe I missed it some other way. But if I did, then I would like to know when I would have received it. I'm not in favor of this purchase because of the things that I mentioned. I know nothing about what those plans are for the fire, for the police station. I've not seen anything on it, nor has anyone else that I know of. But maybe I'm wrong. I have not seen any plans on the, on the revised police station. The purchase and sale agreement for the 13 parking spaces shows that the cost would be, for those 13 spaces, would be $399,000 according to the, to the request. 13 into 39 is 3. That's $30,000 per space. If those spaces were to be put out for bid, it would take 10 years if you, if you were going to charge $10 a day for parking for those spaces. I mean, that, that's very interesting. The assessment on that property is 40, let's see now, $47.98 a square foot. For an acre of land, that would turn into over $2 million for one acre of land. Now, this is a central business district, I understand, and probably would be higher priced than, than other property. I understand that. The appraisal of the property shows four other pieces or five other pieces of property, all of which are habitable. This piece of property has a house that is appraised for, let's see now, $279,000, of which $131,000 is for the house and $48,400 for the land. Now, in fact, that house is not comparable to any of the other houses. In fact, in order to put another house on there, it would probably cost about $20,000 to $40,000 to get rid of the one that, that's there in, in order to build another house on that property, if one were to do that. So, instead of being a benefit, that would be a disbenefit of whatever the cost would be to remove that house. It doesn't seem to me to be a good deal for the town. First of all, if we're going to lose 65 spaces that are for municipal employees, that's what, that's what the plan says, the parking plan says for the town, and we're going to replace it with 13 spaces that are for the general public, that's going to be a very interesting situation. So, I'm not in favor of this until we have a real plan that we can show around, show people. And I'm going to say this probably at Town Meeting as well, so you should just know that. I mean, had I seen all of this, had we had a discussion about all of this, I would have talked about it earlier. We did not talk about this at all until this evening. And I believe, I could be wrong, but I believe this is the same firm that, that did the appraisal on the last piece of property that we owned. I don't know that for a fact because I didn't go back and check that, but I've heard that from other people. So, if I'm wrong on that, shame on me. But I'm not going to suggest that people spend $400,000 for 13 parking spaces for the public downtown, and with the idea that we're going to lose 65 spaces in the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gito. Before you, Mr. Coulter, and Mr. McCrisky, did you still have a comment? Is it related to Mr. Gito?
Yeah, no, I just, Mr. Gito said he did not see plans. Well, those plans that we, I was referring to, Mr. Gito, are the plans that we spent about $400,000 for and didn't use because it was a wish list, okay, with the previous public safety building. So, those plans are still available where that committee of 17 people vetted the needs of the fire department and vetted the needs of the police department. So, the police department's needs are clearly defined in those building plans. And when you look at them, you will see a lot of the departments and a lot of the rooms that were put in there are for changes in building codes for public safety buildings, as well as the needs of the police department that don't currently exist in that building. So, those are the plans I'm referring to. That was a vetted plan, and, and talking with the consultants at the time, that's what I asked specifically, does that address all of it? So, the square footage that is there, and I forget what it is, the square footage that is been, was planned for the public safety building, the police portion of that, if you look at that total square footage and subtract the square footage that we currently have, that makes the renovation of the Rose Street property far, far less than if we had paid for a new building on land, and then, you know, probably we're going to have been involved with a lawsuit to get the land. But, you know, for this property to make that possible, realign parking spaces so that whether we put everybody out here and doing increased enforcement, that's going to free up that lot so that we can put the addition there. I think it's a very small cost for a huge savings. That'll allow us to save $15 million in that area. So, for $400,000 to save $15 million, there's a hell of a return on investment for the residents of the town. And we've paid more than that property, I'm sorry, less, we will pay less than that for that property than we've spent on other pieces of property that we didn't do anything with. So, when we talk about expending the taxpayers' money, I hope we're doing that to say that this is to make a savings to the taxpayers and not just buy something that sits, you know, which we've done. And I'm, I'm in favor of that. But if we're going to do that, my plan is that we should be working smarter with the taxpayers' money, not harder, you know? So, that's my thought, and, you know, I just wanted to return that on the, the plans. Those plans are available, I believe, in Mark Tisdale's office, that he has all them. You can see the square footage on how it works out.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Gito?
I'm not an architect. I haven't seen those plans put on this property. If we're going to do something like that, that seems to be something that we should at least deal with at the annual Town Meeting, when in fact we see something that we could say to the rest of the town, the 30,000 people that live here, not the two or three people that, that had a discussion about it, would, would see it. I mean, I'm, I'm not, I heard what was said before. I'm, I'm, I think I have a responsibility to expect that. We would have plans that would say, what, this is what we plan to do, and show people what we plan to do, not have a, a rump discussion about it and say, this is how we're going to maybe do something, and we'll go ahead and do that later on. I mean, I don't think we conduct business like that generally, but maybe I'm, maybe I'm mistaken. Look, I'm not trying to be a pain in the butt, but I am trying to say, I didn't see these things. What I'm seeing is that we're, we're giving up 65 spaces for 13 for a different purpose. The appraisal doesn't seem to make an awful lot of sense to me. And I, I, I wouldn't do that in any other circumstance, and I'm not going to do it now. I mean, we, we will vote on it, and we will make a decision, no question about that. But I know where I am on that.
Thank you, Mr. Gito. There are two others that want comment. One is Mr. Carrara, and then, Mr. Coulter.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I have never sat with anybody to discuss this property. I had never saw an appraisal till it was in the book. I've never sat with Joe or the town manager or anybody over this. So, I'm just letting you know, Mr. Gito, that when I talk about the police station, I'm talking back when we had to go to the DAR school and have Town Meeting there one time, and we were all ready to jump on board and go, yay, let's build this bomb in the woods in the swamp. And I said, I never heard the chief say one thing about that place having a problem, if you remember that. It was all about the fire and all about this, and they kept jumping from spot to spot. And I said, right in front of, right in front of Town Meeting, that that place could have been added on to very easily. There'd be no spaces lost. But there was a lot of things that could have been done by prior people, and the information was given to them. And I know it was because they offered it to them. When a foundation sat out here pumping water out into our streets for two and a half years, the years, there should have been a deal cut on that. We should have traded the space for that lot over the other side because the overflow on that lot is behind our property, which is ridiculous. There could have been a thing done, but everybody sticks their fingers in their pockets because it's not their idea. I wasn't looking for credit. We could have fixed the problem then. We would have had a parking lot where the house was, where Victor got killed, and then the next piece where we have condos that overtake our lot because we allowed it, we brokered a deal. Now somebody can't park there because they're bitching that they smell exhaust. So now we lost the space that way. Know what I would have done? Just leave the car there and park there.
Madam Chair.
I've never discussed anything with anybody privately. It's all open. Everything I give to you is open.
Mr. Gito. And then Mr. Coulter. No, you've been waiting patiently.
Look at, I can't go back to the other two properties or three properties in town. I mean, all of the things that we're talking about here are things that we didn't do. And what we're left with is a tenth of an acre, a third of an acre, 30,000, 3,000 square feet, more or less, as opposed to something else. I'm just saying, if the comparison, I'm not trying to make people feel angry. I'm trying to just deal with the situation as I see it. And I mean, if people don't like the way I see it, I hope that they don't get angry with me and just have a different opinion, and that's okay. I mean, I'm not, I don't think that Joe or Scott are bad people having a different opinion, but I don't have to share that opinion. So I don't need to yell at anybody about that.
Well, thank you, Mr. Gito, for voicing your opinion. And I'm in favor of this property and the purchase. And I get it. It's public parking and it's not truly the overflow. I mean, I asked for clarification and I was provided that clarification. I looked at the appraisal and so with further ado, I wanted you to make a comment because you had your hand raised for some time, and then we'll make a motion and we'll decide.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, I want to be the bearer of information and not be the advocate for obvious reasons. Mr. Tisdale has been working on a parking plan for Town Hall for over a year. I was of the opinion that parking plan was presented to this board at a previous date, not to discuss about the property on Porter Street, but to show the parking plan. That lot was part of that parking plan. In the last three weeks, Mr. Tisdale's presentation has been provided at four public hearings, specifically about that lot on Porter Street. Mr. Tisdale plans to give a comprehensive presentation to the town meeting representatives about his parking plan and how that piece of land fits in to that plan. Now, as you know how I feel about facts, facts are friendly, so I don't want to state what I'm about to say as a fact. I'll follow up with Mr. Tisdale. But it's of my opinion that only a small portion of the municipal parking lot, I think, Lou, with 73 spaces, is that correct? Is it 63 or 73? Only a small portion of that will be used for any proposed addition to the Fire, Police Department, not the whole thing, just a small portion of it because of set offs and the like. And there are no plans on the addition of the Police Department because it's not possible unless they get that small portion of that parking lot. It's the chicken and the egg. They need to have the space to put the addition on before they can spend money on an architect to design an addition. And it was also my understanding, and again, I've stayed away from it, Mark will have the exact number, is that it was 20 spaces on that Porter Street piece of property. And so if I'm wrong, I'll apologize, but that's what I was told. Admittedly, I've stayed away from it, so I, please don't quote me. But again, it's a small portion of the municipal parking lot that will be used, should an addition be the best approach. The last thing is on the appraisal, our procurement office worked very hard to find a state appraiser that was approved by the state contract because we understood that the challenge of valuing that property was highly complicated by its walking proximity to the MBTA station. So I'm sure that that value is incorporated into it because there's only so many of those pieces of property, and there's no large ones, they're all tiny properties, as Mr. McCrisky pointed out. The second thing that needs to be considered is the comps. There were no comps that were attached to Town Hall. So although they were all the same in terms of square footage and the like, yes, this property next door is in a dilapidated state, it'll be torn down, but it's the only one for sale that is attached to Town Hall that we can use as a parking space in Mr. Tisdale's overall comprehensive parking plan. And as Joe pointed out, I have no skin in this game. I drive from Kingston every day. I've got a great parking spot. But at the end of the day, we've got people that are walking 300 yards to work every day from here, if not 500 yards, from the other end of the public parking space. We need parking badly. And if there were alternatives, we'd certainly look at them. It's the only space that's available. So I close with that. I would ask my friend and boss Lou to sit with Mark if it's not too late, and Mark will gladly go through the comprehensive parking plan. And I can say for one, if Lou voted against it, I'd still be his friend. It's just that I think we need to understand all the facts before we vote it down because we don't have, here's the key point, if we have to add on to the fire, police station, we estimate that'll be about $15 million. If we have to build a new police station, which we would if we don't have the space to add on, it'll be about $40 million. So those are facts, and Mark can speak to those facts much better than I, A, because he's an engineer, B, I've had to back away from it. But I just ask Lou kindly if he'd consider sitting with Mark before next Monday.
Of course I would.
I think that'd be helpful. That's all. That'd be great. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Coulter. Are there any other questions or comments or discussion on this? Oh, yes, Mr. Carrara, I was looking for hands.
I just have a question through you, Madam Chairman, to Attorney Winner.
Yes, he's still online.
Is, Brian, is this something that we have to do tonight? Or is it just, can this be done at town meeting? I mean, if we do something here, it's pretty mute. We get the town meeting and it falls apart.
If it sells, we won't go to town meeting. Mr. Carrara, to answer your question, if we don't have the property under contract, then no matter what town meeting decides, we don't have the right to buy it. So just like when you're buying a home, you have to sign a purchase and sale agreement before you can schedule a closing. And so we need this, and it's the select board's authority to enter into this agreement. But it's town meeting's jurisdiction to decide whether or not to raise the funds and ultimately acquire the property. But as a preliminary to town meeting, we have to have a purchase and sale agreement. Otherwise, the town meeting's vote would be a moot point, as you said, because the seller wouldn't have to sell it to us, no matter what town meeting does. This binds the seller. This takes it off the market.
That's what I wanted to hear. That's what I wanted everybody to hear, that that's the reasoning for this, that we're not pulling anything cute, that it has to be done this way, the same way the land was done for the fire station. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you. I'll just do one more look around to see if there are any other comments, questions, Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you very much. And then on the roll call vote, I'll start with Mr. Gito.
No.
Mr. McCrisky.
Yes.
Mr. Carrara.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you very much. If there's no further business.
Motion to adjourn.
Can I get a second? And all in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Good night, everyone, and see you next time. Thank you.